It is 9 o'clock right now and I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is on approval on January 19th. Motion and a second on January 19th, all in favor please say aye. Motion passed.
December 7th minutes, I would like for you to take those because I couldn't get them printed out. We didn't have the internet for awhile and I had this long story, they didn't make it. I printed the others from my computer and I couldn't.
Okay, Steve just made a motion to approve it. You've got plenty of room up here at the, this there.
Thank you.
Steve made a motion to approve the December 19th minutes.
December, or December 7th.
Table.
Yeah.
Tables, what you want to do?
Right.
Okay, so we've got a table, maybe you've run one more or something. Okay, so, got a motion and a second, a table, seven minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, they are table. Now, approved payroll claims and all other claims.
I was here earlier Karen, looked through them and they all matched the claims. So I'll make a motion that we approve all claims as presented on the agenda.
Okay. Steve made a motion to approve all claims as presented and Lauren seconded. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. If you're prepared with us, we have to do some signing.
I can't, I took my phone, put it back in.
I can tell I haven't been in for awhile. Yeah, I'll deal with it here.
They get sanitized after meetings and so then our papers start going up. That's what they're doing and that's what I'm doing.
Make sure our favors don't have brown.
Rob, and then the IT guy down there.
He didn't say anything about a map.
Okay, next up we have Denise Gonzalez on road repair needs. Do you have Denise here? Good morning, would you come up to the podium please?
I have a map that I would like to get out. Well, my name is Denise Gonzalez and I'm here because I've been calling the Carroll County Highway, the phone number about trying to get attention on my road. I hear that 6694 East 150 North in Flora. 6694 East 150 North in Flora. On East 150 North, there's a total of four homes and one of those homes is a business. And, the map that I, that I sent you shows, on 150 North, on my side of the road, it's never been fixed. It's just a dirt road. And all the surrounding roads are shipped and sealed. I just, my question was, what would it take to, you know, fix my road like the rest of East 150 North and all the roads that cross? I call year after year to the Carroll County Highway and they just tell me it's not in the budget to fix your side of the road. It was not, I guess only the other side of 150 North was in the budget. And, on my road, there's, there's four homes and one of the, my neighbor's house is actually a business, which is Sunrise Welding. And, I mean, there's always traffic through there. And I just, I guess I just need to know why my side of the road, of East 150, got ignored or not fixed. And, that's why I'm here, they told me to tell you.
You, you have one mile section here that's not there though, right?
Uh, it's less than a mile section, but way less than a mile. I think the whole road of East 150 North might be a mile, which the other side that got repaired a few years ago, that's nice. It is just my little area and Sunrise Welding.
You're just outside of Wheeling, I'm not ignoring you, I'm pulling it up on my phone, I followed it.
Yeah, if you look at, at the little map that I gave, you can see the Willington right here. And then, just, and the areas all around it, everything is good, except right there. This is East 150 North all the way around, this area is fixed, this year, this area got done last year because I was calling about the potholes on 500 North. And I also, I call every year on my road and I just seem to get ignored. And now that, this last time I called, they told me that, I think the, the engineer, the manager is no longer there, retired, so, so now I fear that it's gonna go even longer years. And I've been waiting every year just in hopes that it would get repaired.
I'm gonna give you a little history on this, because that is that, we, years ago, decided that our roads were in such terrible shape that we were gonna take the hard surface roads that we already had and make sure that we resurface them every eight years. And, to do that, to accomplish that, we couldn't, couldn't take any more gravel roads into hard surface. Or we wouldn't be, if we added more hard surface roads, we would not be able to reach and roll up even the ones we had. Now, that's been several years ago that we decided that, and we may, may want to relook at this. I kinda chuckled to myself when you say yours is a dirt road there because
Yes.
As a, as a kid, I grew up, about half my time on a gravel road south of town out here. And, I made comment one time on being a dirt road and my dad just had a fit with it a lot because he said, "That's a good gravel road, you've never driven on a dirt road." And he said, "When he was a kid, they had dirt roads and you didn't get down those." I know this time of year, it's soft and from the next couple of months, it's gonna look like a dirt road.
Yeah, it's getting worse.
Mushy and there's some of out there, it really become impassable, it gets so soft, you can't get down through.
I guess my question was, why would one side of East 150 North get done and the other roads that cross like North 500, but the other portion of Northeast 150 did not?
I have, I don't know.
Have you always been a dirt road or a gravel road?
Um, uh, yes, ever, the last 10 years that I've lived there, yes.
Then the other side of, the other road has always been paved?
No, uh, last year, uh, North 500 was, shipped and sealed. Last year. And then the rest of East 150 North that is currently, uh, chipped and sealed was done about, I wanna say three or four years ago. So I was like, "Oh, maybe they're gonna do my side." You know, and then last year when I saw that they were doing North 500, that crosses 150 North, I was like, "Maybe they're coming on my road," and, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm well familiar with your, with your area up there. We had several, a couple of spots on down here to the west of here that were cleanup sites we had to work on for awhile. And I used to teach at Carrollton School, which is on the next road south about the middle of Lockberry, not there anymore.
We got our chip seal map yet?
No, we haven't. We, I was absent last time, but these two gentlemen asked what roads we were putting in for a, um...
Pass, the Great Crossroads.
Yeah, for the Great Crossroads, which is our grants that we have been lucky enough to get the last few years. And, it's not on that, I'm sure, as we don't take gravel. Part of the requirement for this is it has to be a hard surface road we're bringing up to.
Right.
We can, I will guarantee I'll drive it in the next couple of days and as I have it, I say I'm well aware of it, but I haven't during one of the two months, so I'll drive it in the next couple of days. And, I would think we could all look at it and see if we think it should go on to the chip seal list for this time. Now, one of the things that they might have to assess is is there enough there to chip seal or without them, because another thing we used to do for years, we just chipped seal wherever the road is out there and there wouldn't be about that much gravel underneath. And so, next, it looked good this year, boy, you got a nice road, but next spring, it's gone. It's falling all apart. So, now every time we take away from gravel to chip seal, we really know that there's a lot of stone. And they probably will let traffic drive on it for several months to pack it all down to make sure that we're not wasting the money at the top, the hard surface on the top. So we need to make sure we've got a base underneath it and we need to make sure that we, we have something here to work with. But, I, I can empathize with you, as I said, I grew up, my grandparents south out here and it wasn't fun. I mean, dust in the summertime, just rolling off on the house and, so...
There's another spot too that I got emailed out that their river after they piled turned to mush because the gravel's thrown off of it. There's several that we're gonna look into.
That's a big problem.
Yeah, like, roads don't gravel on that road.
Yeah, I have always thought that some of our savings was false by having gravel roads because when we plow snow, we crouch it all off into the ditch, the gravel is a lot of it. And, um...
Because this one here is 150 West.
150 West?
Yeah, that they pulled over there for the road.
That road on, uh, North 500 East, they did exactly what you said, they put the gravel and they waited until, uh, there were several drivers for like several weeks and then they came back. And, so I've seen that done on the other side of East 150 North, on North 500 East. But just my area, I don't know what keeps happening, it's that little section of my house and the business of Sunshine Welding.
You are in, is she in your district or mine, Lauren?
Carroll County.
What?
Carroll County.
Yeah, that's right, you're Carroll's of years. No?
Steve's? I'm not familiar with the area.
Yeah, he lives just north of there, he lives there about 36 blocks. Yeah, the Steve's. What?
I'll try to get out there and see who knows.
Yeah, can we have your phone number if you don't mind, they will keep in touch with you on this?
Okay, yeah, I was like, here, get an update on something. I don't know what else to do. So do I get my phone?
You just give it to her.
Give it to her. And fill the floor.
Uh, 765-436-801.
We got it in the folder already? Okay. Yeah, we have it.
We had your phone.
Okay. So, I hear something, uh, within his name or something.
Well, I, we have not, as you said, we do not have an engineer. We're gonna be, kind of doing again for an engineer. It's been a long process to get it done, but our highway department is doing pretty well with the management that we have. So, within the next, well, we usually get it by March. Two separate roads. I'm over at the highway department, or I haven't been in the last two weeks, but quite a bit. And, um, we'll talk to them about it, see if that's possible, get that one done. Or at least start the process, why I put more stone on it and getting it a little bit packed down. It may take two seasons to get it done, and it may not. I don't know the condition of what's out there.
If it's on a thinking, if it's on a thinking, it's pretty poor shape.
Pretty poor shape. I don't, I don't doubt it, but she's telling us that it's just turning to mud out there. So, I'm hopeful we'll get something done for it this time. Okay? And, do not be afraid to come back in or to call any one of the three of us and keep answering.
Take one of my cards over there.
Yeah.
Over there by the chair.
Because we work for you, so we're gonna do what we can, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Sheriff Lesby, you're up next.
Morning gentlemen.
Morning.
My portion's gonna be short, I'm gonna bring up a gentleman here to ask him, who's that? This morning, Craig Cleaver with Act of Dick. This is the update as to, as it relates to our underground sewage lines under the jail and what we're looking to do to get that updated and repaired, so, Craig?
Good morning.
Morning. We got two maps here, each one you can get one.
Oh, one each, that's interesting.
There's two different things here, little.
Yeah, there's two different things.
Right, you've got one pile of one, I got one pile of the other.
It's all complicated, sure. That's the same one?
Mine does. One should have a solid blue line, and then I got an olive blue line.
We're gonna come later.
Solid blue and chalk.
And a chalk.
Okay, we're ready.
Alright, got it figured out now. So, basically, you know, we were approached, um, to see what the alternative, or options were for lining the sewer liner under the jail. We don't actually, to be clear, we don't actually line ourselves, though we live with a lot of line now, but, um, there's multiple different, uh, options out there for lining. But these two here, I think are, if that's the route you guys want to go anyway. So, basically, there's two lining options and then the other option, here we got, the open that require moving for the inmates and all that stuff. And it kind of shuts them down for, I think it was a couple of weeks and months. So, if we go to this route, there's two different options. One would require shutting the line down for increments of four hours. And, it would, they'd need to enter three different times, for four hours, in about a two or three day window. The other option is have the whole thing lined and it would report, it would require shutting the whole thing down one time for 18 hours. But, so let me, let me get into the differences between the two lining processes. So if you, on the, this one here, I should give you my two, but this one here, um, the line would basically be, the lining would be one solid liner, all the way from the manhole out in the alley, all the way up through, around that cleanout and down here. That'd be one solid liner, and then each lateral that comes into the line, they would go in and they cut a hole in that liner to go out, flow away to that, from that lateral. The, um, this option would require cutting a small hole, probably a three by three or four by four, in the aisle way down at the end of this, of this line, so they can get the robot in there, go in there and cut those holes and lap it. That's one option that was, it was a little bit cheaper than the other option, but again, that one, let's see, that one was 43.5 basically, to do that, to go to that option. The other option is basically what they would call segment lining. And what that would be is it would be a continuous liner up to each joint, but then there would be about an 18 inch section where each lateral comes in, it would not be lined. So essentially, there's gonna be a, a hole there, not a hole, but essentially, there's gonna be a space there where the, the pipe, it's only the original pipe. It's not the, it doesn't have fiberglass liner inside of it.
And that would cause catches and...
Potential, but probably not so much catches, but what I'd be more worried about is if that pipe is already real bad in that location, it could potentially only go a few more years.
I've worked around 14 years, I know what they flush.
I've heard a few of the stories. But, so basically that, you know, the pipe at that location, we wouldn't be improving that 18 inch section into the lather. That one, that one came up to 47.89 for that option. I don't know, I don't know what, from a contractor's view and from a general lot of maintenance type of stuff on, on things like this, the first option structurally is a better option, but you've got to deal with about 18 hours of downtime with, with inmates after, in that, in that situation. I don't know what, I don't know how the deal works and all that, so that's where I'm presenting these two options. But that way, you're gonna have, essentially, so, I don't know, I guess maybe I should explain how the lining process works. Essentially, if you can think, picture taking a saw and put, put fiberglass resin on it and pull that inside that liner, turn it inside out and then blow it up with, with air. And then it, and then it cures in that time. And that's where, during that time, we have to have flow or no flow while it cures. And, and then, it basically, essentially bays it to place. When it's done, I have a sample, I forgot to bring it, but when it's done, you know, it takes away maybe a 3/16 of the wall pipe, wall pipe thickness, or diameter, sorry.
What about the blow up that's already there, that's like, the pipe's gone on the bottom and it's come down? Would they just fill that in?
They would, they would fill that in, but however, when we did our video and figuring on which route we have to go, or we, you guys decide to go, we make, we're gonna do another video, but when we did our video, we didn't find where the bottom of the pipe was missing. It was just an crustacean on the side of the pipe that has to be cleaned out.
Okay.
That made it look like the bottom of the pipe was missing. But again, you know, until we get it cleaned, we don't know, we know it's possible to clean it, but it'll make a hole in the pipe.
Right.
Which, again, shouldn't be an issue most of the time, if it did, they're gonna line over it anyway. So, now, with both of these options, you know, there is, there is the chance that, that something in the process would go haywire and it requires getting another hole in the, hallway or whatever. So, you know, there is, this isn't a, this isn't an absolute final price, but it's, it should be. It should be.
It's been a long time. You'd have to move the inmates out for at least three days, just to, so they... Wouldn't you have to move them out for at least three days for them to do this?
Well, depending on which option we potentially go with.
Well, I'm looking at option one, I don't know about these two, but if I'm gonna do them, we'd do it right.
The 18 hours?
Yeah. Option one, the solid blue line?
Yeah.
That'd be the one I'd recommend. And I would recommend you move them into another county for at least three days. That would not have to worry about it, just get it done.
And I don't know, I mean, you know better how this works than I do. I'm just throwing out ideas, I don't know how many inmates you have in there right now, if it's possible, just to, you know, during that period, just to shuffle and go back for them or whatever. I mean, those are all...
You really can't because they all join to the main drain, both sides of something.
Yeah.
So you, you have to move them.
My thought, looking at this map, I'm not sure what this drain at the bottom, so, be this line across, across there. I mean, I thought that that is a separate line, um, that looks like it probably has that one on. I don't know if that's the case. You know?
I believe it's the holding cell. Now, that'd be, if I remember, I've worked with a lot of people, that's like a storm drain, from, from the roof that comes down, which one do you tell us about here?
This one here. So it comes into that manhole, you get that one there.
Yeah, it's a, it's, Mr. Preacher said, I think it's a storm drain.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I don't, that's where I don't know. So, those are the options. I was asked about when a start date would be, you know, basically, um, the one company I didn't get an answer from, but the other company that we're talking about, if you would give that route, um, they told me that, essentially, if you guys said yes today, they could probably get it in the next couple of weeks, although they've got a big job that starts in, in South Bend, that right now is a lot ahead of us. So, um, if they, if it gets to where that one starts, then it'll be...
You were pretty honest.
Right. There's that one up there, I think, a couple of months.
So if we would say yes today, they can start soon?
Yeah.
Then when we get it done, it'll be.
That's the nutshell.
Then we gotta go to our county council guys to get the line.
You got it, buddy. So the first option is what it's called, forty-three five, that's, they have to be out of the jail thirteen hours on that one?
On the first option, well, not for our process necessarily, unless there's just no way of shutting that off, but yeah, from what I'm hearing, yeah.
And then you do shut the water off, then you get into violations of jail code and stuff.
Okay, that's it. Craig, do you want to bring up the discussion we had on the regard to the warranty? Or, or warranty? Oh, so uh both of these, both of these liners in a commercial application have a ten year warranty. So if they, if the liner would fail for whatever reason, and for ten years, it should, it should be covered. Um and of course, you know, with all warranties, if they say ten years, their life expectancy is probably forty years, but yeah, that's, that's what kind of, yeah, there are, like all warranties, there's some limitations, but that's what happens.
Do you know, if you just like, if you suggest we put like a four block in there somewhere, we still have to have the inmates go in and out there, everybody be drinking a bugger to go back for five minutes. Then plus, you gotta have drinking water available, so I need them all twenty-four seven. So it's just easier just to bust them to another facility for at least three days. They can say, this needs to be fixed.
Let me, let me say one more thing.
Yeah.
The, so the, the pro, during the process of lining is the only time the line needs shut down, when we're actually cleaning, which is gonna be about a day to day and a half of that process. Um that actually the flow helps us, so you know, at that point, I don't know if that helps you guys at all, but that, at that, at that point.
But I know what they'll do, flush all kinds of stuff when you're trying to clean it, and they'll just make it worse on you.
Yeah.
I hate to say that, but they're there for a reason, and they're not there for being there.
If they flush a t-shirt down there, then that would cause some serious problems for us and become an expert problem. Financial problem for you guys.
I would, I would recommend that the sheriff would just move them to another facility for at least a couple, couple days, at least three days.
So that, that, this price does, this is length instead of including cleaning?
No, that includes the cleaning.
Yeah, it's not.
Yes. Like, that includes the cleaning and being a hole in, in the alley, the only thing that didn't clean or didn't include is the flooring. I'm not sure, but I didn't take the time to go into what kind of flooring, we could vacuum, basically finish it with concrete and then whatever surface you guys wanna put on top.
I remember that cleanout's down at the end of the gate. That's very easily done out. So concrete, putting it down on the underside probably wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't look dirty, but.
Yeah, it wouldn't look pretty, but it'd use.
Be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, when, when my sewer plug at my house and I had to go get a root machine, I went to Walmart and bought one of those ten dollar bucket lids that are made like a toilet, and they snap onto a five gallon bucket. What if you bought twenty of those, those things and put plastic in the buckets and shank it on?
Sheriff's not liking this one.
He's not?
No, you wanna go in there and dump them?
I'll dump them, I, seriously, I will dump them.
Yeah, but you still eliminate the water, you just.
What about this, why couldn't you just get a bottle of water?
How to stay in jail, cause we've got a bottle.
What, what's that mean, exactly?
You give them a plastic bottle, they're gonna make a knife out of it here.
I don't like it.
Yeah.
Well, you guys know this.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Believe it or not, they would make black.
Okay, yeah.
They can't even reach the electrical sockets, but I've seen a guy make a pipe out of paper and put lead on the end of it, and he was sparking it so he could light a cigarette that it stuck in. And these are, yeah, you've got some talented people that they're just using the wrong thing. I'm gonna make a motion to go with option one, and we get it started as soon as possible.
And option one is the eighteen hour downtime and forty-three five price, right?
Yeah, rough as. Yeah, rough as, but I don't know. I, I think that would be, yeah, unless there's something unforeseen.
And I still think we'll be under probably sixty thousand by the time we move them.
Can we get, sell this to, move out?
Yeah, we, we were in town early on with White County and yeah, so that shouldn't be a problem.
They all do the same area. But can you all do it White County?
Fortunately, our numbers are low, we're, we're at seventeen this morning, they'll be adding a couple more, we'll be at nineteen this afternoon, so we're still below twenty.
We could quarantine all the way to the beginning. So I think we need to do it now, since we're low on numbers and it's just.
You second the motion. I don't know of any other option other than something like this, because I mean, first thing strikes me, it's kinda like buying new saddle for a dead horse, but.
The one thing I will throw out there before you make a final decision, you know, I sent an email to Hope here there, that's kind of a, didn't have all the legal lingo in it, the contracts will have, there will, there will be some of that, just so you don't get flying side of your stuff.
He just forwarded it to them?
Yeah, just, it takes a lot of work, throw all that together, and I wanna make sure that we're gonna get a hold of this. Sure.
So my motion includes defending contract and?
Excuse me, so I have a motion on the floor and seconded to go with option one, uh which is, would have an eighteen hour downtime roughly and roughly forty-three thousand five hundred dollar cost and for a continuous new line, and this is pending contractor.
Will operate and use language.
You're gonna offer it as being assigned if it comes in between meetings, right? Is that all right for you? You got a second?
He mentioned new line, yes.
Oh, yeah, well, you'll do the inmate, well, that's on him.
Yeah, that, I would report that, so we have a daily line.
Yeah, we did mention new line. Why, you said new line, I was.
Oh, do I?
I, I ran. A lighter, however you wanna say. A continuous line.
On the official, yeah, the I P B line. The I P B line, sensor cure replacement.
Okay. Everybody together on the motion, and if they did, I call for a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, aye.
All right, all of you, that's.
That's an audit, I'm here, is this a true amount that they can ask for at the commission, uh council meeting in a couple of weeks?
No. Yeah, it's an estimate of a.
For your, for your part?
So what, do we need to ask for fifty from the council?
What I'm saying is there, you're gonna need to ask them, and then they didn't need permission to advertise, so it'll be in March when they decide it. Unless I can have a figure and I can possibly get it to paper by noon today.
Well, it'd be, I mean, I get the figures, I mean, if you ask fifty, you know that. This should go, I mean, this is ninety, yeah, that's ninety, ninety percent sure this should go. But.
We go a little high.
If we go a little bit higher than that, it'll be.
Was that for forty-five?
If there's, if there's anything goes wrong, if I don't like, make forty-five, probably more than forty-eight. I mean, after, but.
Okay, so we presented to the council, and what's, they have to advertise for this uh official?
Maybe some of the other kind of line items, ability repairs. I mean, he'd probably pay half of it, but he needed to come back to every.
And half of the year that we did.
Well, I was just sitting here thinking, I mean, I, I'm reluctant, but um obviously, there's a pretty decent amount for Allen County inmate housing, but I don't know what the rest of the year is gonna bring, so it could be, I mean, yes, I could transfer now, but it could be they'll have to come back to the council later on if our numbers swell.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Just do that, move it from that line, because you're gonna use some of it to move them anyway.
Yes.
So you move, whatever the bill is, you'll move that amount over.
Okay.
Then that way, we don't have to go for an additional, which keeps them.
Slowed up a lot.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Yeah, that, if, if you wait a month to make a decision, then that may, really goes behind on getting that.
The bureaucracy of government makes it where they do. Okay.
That good?
Thank you very much, appreciate your presentation, I'm sure you'll get to that. Next up is Paul Cooks here, Hookson?
Focus, yes, Hookson. Sorry I didn't return your call. That's okay. Every time you called me, I was busy at work. I understand, I've got a, some cards, uh, to pass those around, and then, I didn't know, Commissioner Pearson, since you suggested I come, I didn't know if you had anything in particular you wanted to discuss, I just put a little slide deck up and. Well, we spent a lot of money so far, getting the design, getting things where we're at, almost, almost a half a million dollars and then we got um stopped by the council because they didn't like the pricing, so um to me, I just think it came back to the person we had in charge of it, but that's watering the bridge and we're moving forward. And what I was asking was just what maybe your thoughts were on the current design, or what you can come up with, and uh just keep the same building without finishing like one cell that's got less, like twenty beds in it, and see if that would help our costs to, with the council. I don't know if that's possible. Well, good, good questions, um in fairness, we haven't, we haven't done a deep dive into the design for this, and however, um we have, we're in the process of completing the project that we're working on with that with us, and I think Bolton County currently, and so. I have probably some rough ballpark idea based on the similarity of design that they provide, but probably you're responsible for me to comment on pricing without doing a deep dive, you know, typically, irrespective of which delivery method you use, and we don't, you can get into that to whatever level you want to, we're indifferent, but our process is roughly the same, right? So you would take the design and start calling subcontractors, the potential bidders, and comparing that both with our historical database of jail construction and with what the marketplace is doing right now. Cause you could end up with it better, you could end up with worse, my understanding is this has been bid out twice, once, just one time? So, you know, rebids. Right. Sometimes, sometimes they go worse, right? If, I, I don't know what, literally, the packages were put together before they were put out, I, I, it would be irresponsible for me to comment on another project. I understand that, it's like apples and oranges. It's all fruit though, right? Right, yeah, it is fruit. We're leased in the ballpark potentially, but um, you know, in a, you know, fully designed jail, right? And so value engineering unfortunately typically becomes sort of what I call a diet by reputation, that's how I see it, that scope somewhere. But I think, you know, at the end of the day, it's running a trial and true process, we've got six jails under construction in here right now. Um we just bid Hendricks County, which is a fifty-five million dollar jail, um a little over a month and a half ago. Came in five million less than budget, we had really good subcontractor coverage, which we hadn't seen in a long time. You know, up until probably, I'd say March equal June of twenty twenty, we had a hard time getting subcontractors covered, you know. We were lucky if you got two people that did on package. Now it's loosened, it's, you know, knock on wood, it appears to be loosening up a little bit. We had really good coverage on the last week we did, um coming again under budget. Typically, we work in design, um you know, at the front end and we work through that process, which is unavailable here, but you know, we stay within one to two percentage points of a hundred and fifty, so it's hard to say without looking at design. I came here today to renew our interest in helping you, if that makes sense to you. Well, the sheriff brought it to us and Fulton County Sheriff came in and talked to us, and I'm speaking for myself, but the way we went with it last time, we had a committee, two years, they did a study, they decided who they wanted to design it and who they wanted to jail manage it. And we started moving forward, but then we had some conflict with the council and us and the building manager, I guess that's what we're calling it, construction manager, because we didn't go out to bid for that. And that's watering the bridge and we need to move forward, because as you can see, you just heard, we're spending almost sixty thousand dollars just to replace a sewer line there. Yeah. So. Yeah, I, I, I think you, you have experience working in jail. And the comments you made and Sheriff Lesby know, I mean, those people are pretty hard on, on a facility.